We would like to call this meeting to order. I'm Ken Watkins, Vice Mayor, and our Mayor Jen Miles has asked me to conduct this meeting, and she is attending via Zoom. We'd like to have a call to order and roll call and turn the time over to Clerk Meredith.
Mayor Miles?
President.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Mello?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Counselor Nelson had indicated that she was unable to attend and had been excused, so that had not been communicated with Annie, sorry.
Thank you. We would like to have an invocation which will be given by Pastor Peter Ernst of the Family Bible Church, after which, and please stand for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we're thankful tonight for the liberty that we have, not only in Christ Jesus, but also within this great constitutional republic. We pray, Lord, your blessing over this meeting tonight. Give wisdom to these ones that have been tasked with the responsibility of leading us. We pray for our mayor and vice mayor, for each one of our city council members. We thank you for our police department and our fire departments. We thank you for the many people that diligently work hard to make life in Kingman, Arizona such a delightful place. We ask your blessing now, for we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to thank Pastor Ernst for that prayer. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made related thereto. First on the agenda is our call to the public. Clerk Meredith?
Vice Mayor, we did not receive any written comments ahead of time, nor did anybody request to join us via Zoom, and I've not received any forms this evening from anybody that would like to make a comment from the audience.
Okay. Again, we would like to welcome all those who are viewing via Zoom, and then, of course, anyone here in attendance, just to ask again, does anybody want to bring something forward that they would like to address council and call to the public? Okay, seeing none, we will continue. Next on the agenda is item two, Consent Agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Councilmembers, Mayor, is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like to pull and discuss? Okay, seeing none, I would like entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walker. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mello. All those in favor of accepting items A through H on the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Oh, it was delayed. Mayor, just to clarify, you are in favor of everything, correct?
I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Your connection's a little bit delayed, so that's why we wanted to make sure. Okay, we have no old business, we have no new business. Item number five, Department Reports. Turn the time over to Manager Foggan.
Thank you, but we have a whole bunch of reports for you, so get comfortable. The first one that we have is our 2021 Annual Audit Report. Every year, the city goes through a really extensive audit process with an independent auditor as required by state law. That audit was done and completed in the time necessary, which is actually before the end of December 2021. And so, we are fortunate to be joined by our auditor, and Ms. Tina, do you want to introduce our third-party team member? And, well, the time's now yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Foggan. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. With us this evening, we have Brian Hemmerly, who is a partner at Henry &amp; Horn. He is also the partner that serves on our audit team, and we are very fortunate to have him with us this evening to provide you with this report. Brian, I'll hand the time over to you.
Thank you, Tina. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Okay, excellent. Well, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of Council. Again, my name is Brian Hemmerly. I am the lead audit partner with Henry &amp; Horn. I believe this is our third audit with the city of Kingman. We did issue the report on time before the end of December. It was uploaded to the Auditor General's office, the GFOA, for your, hopefully, your award in the next coming year, as you've received in the past few years as well. This year's audit received a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion. We did provide four reports this year. The first report is on the financial statements, whether they're materially stated correct. They are materially correct. We do provide reasonable assurance that those financial statements are materially correct. We do that through statistical sampling, internal control test work, walking through and observing those internal controls, and transaction testing throughout the entire city. Now, we do not test every transaction at the city, of course, that would provide absolute assurance. We provide reasonable assurance based on our materiality levels and that statistical sampling. That report received a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion. There were no findings or recommendations to provide during, for that report. The second report is what we call our compliance report with laws, grants, contracts, regulations, debt covenants, things of that nature. The city received a clean opinion on that report as well. We do test your compliance with all those items, and nothing come to our attention during that audit that needed to be reported to council or members of management. The third report we do is for your federal funding, so all your federal grants. If you spend more than $750,000 within one year of federal grant money, then you are required by the federal government to receive what's called a single audit. This year, you spent just over $4 million, and that is reported in what we call the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, your Sifa. Of the $4 million, we were required to test three programs this year, three grants, two of them related to your airport. The two related to the airport were the Airport Improvement Program Grant, and then there was a portion of that Airport Improvement Program that was COVID-19 funding from the CARES Act. That also was tested. And then, the third grant we tested was your Formula Grant for Rural Areas. All three were considered major programs under the federal government's guidelines. None of the three received any findings during the audit this year, so there's nothing to report for those three programs. You did receive a clean opinion, again, for those single audit programs. Last year, you received a finding as a city regarding land with the airport that hadn't been properly reported. That finding has been remedied and has been corrected during the 2021 audit, so I'm happy to report. There are no new findings, and last year's finding has been corrected. The last report we issue is what's called the Annual Expenditure Limitation Report. I'm sure you're all very familiar with that report. This year, you had $50 million, roughly $50 million, available to spend based on what the voters approved on November 6, 2018, as your home rule. The amount that was spent, subject to the expenditure limitation, was $34.2 million, so you had a excess amount of, or I'm sorry, you came under the limit by $15.7 million, so a nice, healthy difference between what was spent and what was allowed to be spent based on the expenditure limitation report. That has been signed and filed to the Auditor General's office for the state of Arizona on time during the year, and there were no issues in that report either. With that said, those are the four reports that we have audited and issued. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from council? Okay, hearing none. Tina, we appreciate this, and Mr. Hurley, thank you for that report.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for having me.
Tina, any other comments from you?
I just want to say thank you very much to the mayor and council, as well as to Brian and his team, and we look forward to working with him again next year. Thank you, Brian.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tina. Have a wonderful New Year.
Thank you. Manager Foggan?
The next item is federal legislative update. The mayor had been contacted by Senator Kelly's office and had made arrangements for this, so I think it would be appropriate for the mayor to introduce our guest and the subject matter. Mayor?
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Am I clear in getting through to you in this? I changed computers.
Yes, ma'am, you sound good.
Okay, good. Well, I would be glad to introduce Dr. Coral Evans, who is the Northern Arizona representative for Senator Kelly's office here in Arizona. And Dr. Evans is going to speak to us about the senators' efforts in Washington on, I think, several fronts, but I'm going to leave that to her to give those legislative updates because she is the most current, and we really appreciate you being here, Dr. Evans. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Miles. I appreciate the opportunity to do this update to yourself, to the vice mayor, to the Kingman City Council, Kingman leadership, and the residents of Kingman. I will cover five different areas, and it's my understanding that time is somewhat limited, so I'm going to try to hit, really, the high notes. I'm going to be talking about infrastructure, congressionally-directed spending, downwinders, veterans, and rural economic development. For the infrastructure update, regarding the infrastructure bill that was passed last winter, funding areas that I believe would be of interest to the city of Kingman would be the $65 billion to expand affordable and high-speed internet access, and that will include at least $100 million expected to come here to Arizona. Additionally, within that bill that was passed, there is $8.3 billion for western water infrastructure, with specific funds going towards repairing aging dams in Arizona and funding the drought contingency plan, among other things. This will help Arizona and the West become more resilient to drought. Senator Kelly is also working to introduce a bill that allows the Colorado River Indian Tribes to lease water, their water to Arizona communities. This is something I know that Mojave County has expressed interest in. With regards to congressionally-directed spending requests by way of an update, there were three congressionally-directed spending requests that were included in the Senate FY22 appropriation bills that were specific to Mojave County. One, very specific to the city of Kingman. These are likely to be included in the final FY22 budget whenever that passes, but I do need to say that things in Washington do change, and so until the bill passes, it's not a guarantee. However, within that request, those requests, was the Bank Street Channel Storm Water Control and Reuse Project. The funding request, it was approximately $1 million. It was requested by Mojave County, and that will be used to divert storm water to the existing Mojave Channel, which will alleviate the flooding issues along Bank Street in front of the Kingman High School. Regarding the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, RICA, otherwise known as Downwinders. Senator Kelly was a co-sponsor of two bills on RICA. RICA was raised as an issue to him when he first ran for office, and more recently, when he visited Kingman and spoke with the mayor and other individuals. Very specifically, the first bill was the Mojave Downwinders Bill. This bill was Senator Sinema's bill, and this was to add Mojave County and Clark County, Nevada, to the program. Congressman Stanton was the lead on the companion bill in the House, which had a hearing with the House Judiciary Committee. Senator Kelly submitted testimony at that hearing in support of the bill. The comprehensive RICA extension, this was a second bill, this was Senator Luan's bill, which would have expanded and extended and reformed RICA, including adding Mojave County. Senator Kelly is a co-sponsor. We worked with Senator Luan to propose an amendment to the National Defense Authorization Act, NDAA, but the Senate could not agree on its passing of any amendments to NDAA, and so it didn't make it on. The RICA Trust Fund will technically expire on July 11, 2022, and the senator's staff is currently seeking another bill that might allow for an amendment. When it comes to veterans-specific bills that Senator Kelly has sponsored, co-sponsored, assisted with, and got passed, I think it's important for us to remember that as a retired U.S. Navy captain who flew combat missions, he's dedicated to our veterans. The bill that I really want to highlight would be SS 2088, and this is the Brandon Act. This bill was passed, you might have heard about it in the news, but very specifically, it was designed to protect service members who experienced mental health emergencies, so they would be able, it protects their confidentiality, and it allows them to seek treatment without having to worry about their employment. There's also another bill that he introduced bipartisan that has to do with the VA Quality Healthcare and Accountability and Transparency Act. And this bill will require the VA to work with veteran service organizations to consolidate and display staffing, vacancy information, patient wait time, quality of care, and patient safety measures and outcomes in a way that's accessible and that veterans can actually use. And very, and lastly, very quickly, I wanted to just talk about economic development and what the senator is doing on that front, specifically as it relates to rural Arizona. Senator Kelly wrote to the congressional leadership in September outlining and highlighting his priorities for the 117th Congress. These priorities included establishing a rural partnership program to make sure that we can receive federal funding to assist with planning, design, engineering permitting, environmental reviews, or other pre-developmental activities which help rural communities develop strong and competitive shovel-ready infrastructure projects. Additionally, he is working on establishing a regional technology hub program at the Economic Development Administration, which would provide a community or region with long-term dedicated resources to help carry out workforce development activities, business entrepreneurship development activities, technology and infrastructure activities related to infrastructure, related to technology development. And so, communities selected would be encouraged to fund collaborative partnerships focused on economic development and meeting concrete milestones to demonstrate meaningful progress. So those are just some highlights about what your senator has been doing on your behalf. I would welcome any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments from council, and Mayor Miles, of course, since you introduced Dr. Evans?
I would just say thank you so much for that informative presentation. Sounds like you are all being very busy on our behalf, and we appreciate it. I hope when you are able to come in person, you'll be able to see some of our new things that are happening in Kingman, including our new Tesla's charging stations. We have a whole bank of them, speaking of partnerships, and down at the powerhouse. And so, as you know, things are always moving forward here. We appreciate your support and the senator's support as we help just keep these wonderful things moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Dr. Evans, once again, thank you for that update. Manager Foggan, item D. No, I'm C, sorry, C. You're jumping ahead.
Getting ahead of yourself. All right, so the development process for subdivisions, we were approached, or I was approached, I guess the team was approached, a number of months ago from one of our local developers who had asked if there was any way in which we could speed up the process of the subdivision approval process. And that kind of spurred the question of how are we doing compared to other communities? What does our process look like? What are other communities doing differently that could possibly speed up the subdivision process? So, at the time, I'd asked to borrow one of Tina Moline's employees, Melissa, and Melissa started doing the work to collect data on what other communities are doing versus what is the process for Kingman. In that gathering of information, she resigned her position, so we didn't start from scratch, but we had to hand that off to somebody else. And so, we have been looking at that, and then, as of the last couple of weeks, talking about what do we see other communities doing versus what are we doing, and is there places in which to speed up the development process? And so, Phil and I, along with Public Works and building inspections, and I guess the Development Department and Planning have all met, talked about what that could possibly look like, and Phil and I finished the presentation today, so it's fresh off the press and ready to present. So I've asked Phil to walk you through what our findings are and what we think may be some of the possible ways in which to speed up the process, both pros and cons, and it would, and maybe possibly what that would look like as far as changes to our existing code, so. Phil Allred, City Engineer. Thanks, Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Allred, welcome.
Good evening. Give me just a second here. All right. Like Ron said, we compiled the information. We have just a short presentation, well, we'll see how short it is, a presentation for you, summarizing the results. Just to reiterate, this was a group effort, and appreciate everyone who did research and provided input. As we were going through this process, we asked ourselves some questions. I list some of those questions up on the screen. What are other communities doing? What information is required? Let me see if I can. What information are communities asking for? We did a little bit of research on assurances for infrastructure, a little bit about who's approving and accepting the final improvements for infrastructure, what time do we, are they allowing building permits to be issued? That's the vertical portion, not the infrastructure. It's like the homes, or in the case of a commercial subdivision, the commercial building. And, you know, are we following the best practices, and is there something that we can do to streamline the process? As we went through this, we looked at 11 different communities, and they're listed there on the screen. We kind of felt like those were similar communities of size and type. Just to note, we actually, after we started this, we looked at two other communities as well, and it didn't really change the results that I'm about to present, so I didn't add those other two communities to the presentation. And just as a note, even though they're not a municipality, we added Mojave County since they're our neighbor. So I'm going to just kind of walk this discussion through as, in the process that normally a developer would follow when it comes to starting a subdivision, and that starts with a preliminary plat. Generally speaking, state statute requires a preliminary plat to be submitted. There is an exemption for small subdivisions, you know, something less than 10 lots. The preliminary plat is done at the early design phase, and usually what we're looking at is the street network, zoning issues, you know, like lot sizes and different things, drainage requirements, and utilities. And so, we're looking at all those different things. And up on the screen, you'll see the, on the left, is what Kingman and the majority of the communities are asking for. On the right are some differences that we noticed from other municipalities. Just to note, the last item on the right, where the other community requirements, where it talks about a title report, the city does require a title report. We just required at a different stage, we required it at the final plat stage. Some communities were requiring it at the preliminary plat stage. So as we were looking at the process, we did find some differences for the preliminary plat. We noticed that five of, well, nine require a planning commission meeting, and five of those nine are the final approval body for that preliminary plat. So that means it wouldn't go to the city council for final approval, it would just be the planning commission, and then they would go straight into the final plat process. Four require council approval, and we're one of those four that require it. There were some that allowed for staff approval of all preliminary plats, two of those, and then for the minor plats, what they call, you know, less than 10, there was also a process that would allow staff to approve those without going to a commission or a city council. So after the preliminary plats approved, the developer goes to the final plat process. And final plats are kind of the final legal document that gets recorded. Final plats are used to define the public right-of-way easements, property lines, and other information. Also during the final plat process, engineering plans are required and prepared for street, sewer, water, flood control, and other necessary infrastructure. So you'll see that there on the left, again, is mostly self-explanatory items. Just to note, on the right-hand side, the ADQ sanitary facilities approval, that is required, that's part of the public report by the Department of Real Estate. We just don't include it as part of our approval process. That is something that usually happens after the final plat's been approved. And you'll notice that, you know, some of these, you know, where it talks about the assured water supply, those likely are for communities that are in an active management area, and the Army Corps of Engineers statement was from the county, and that makes sense because it's a large land area, they have a lot more jurisdictional waters that they have to deal with. So what we found, more or less, is for the final plat approval process, there wasn't much difference from other communities. So I'm not going to go through all of that, just know that for the process of approving a final plat, we were very similar with all the other communities. And all require a council or board approval. So just to talk a little bit about assurances. Assurances are required by statute. Assurances are required by statute, um, and basically, uh, they, they, they come in different ways. It can be a performance bond, um, or other type of assurances to assure the installation of the required street sewer, water drainage, all the, all the improvements for, for the infrastructure. So, you'll, you'll see that, um, for the most part, um, e-everyone's kind of doing the same thing. There's a little bit of variation on, on what's, what's allowed. When it comes to, um, some types of assurances that require some sort of cash or bond, um, a cost estimate's required, um, so that a value can be assigned to the improvements to assure the, um, completion of the, the, uh, the, the work that needs to be done. You'll notice that the majority of the, the municipalities require some sort of factor above 100% for, um, the completion of the improvements. Um, that's usually because, um, for the city to, to complete it, uh, we require some, uh, different things like bonds and, and different insurance requirements. So, the cost is usually a little bit higher, and, uh, usually there's a, a, a time gap from the time that, um, the assurances are approved and when the, the, the work is actually done. So, that's also trying to take into account maybe a little bit of inflation or pri-, uh, changes in price. You'll notice that, um, Kingman's 130% were, were the highest within the last 10 years. There, there was some discussion about our, our, um, bonding process and our, uh, the, the value of that. And what led us to where, where we're at now is there were some improvements that the city had to complete, and we had to go call the bond, call, make a call on the bond, and that amount wasn't nearly enough for us to, to complete the work. And so, I think that's how we landed where, where, where we are now with the, the 130%. So, when plats are approved, there's usually some sort of agreement on how the assurances will be released. Um, this, this could be included as part of the council resolution when, when, when it's approved, or it can be by a separate type of agreement. It just kind of depends on the type of assurance. Of note, that they, some municipalities, uh, made the distinction to allow staff to approve the release of assurances, uh, meaning, uh, to, if there was money or something posted, they, they were allowing staff to, um, authorize that rather than the council. Two of the communities allowed staff to accept the improvements, and then, um, eight require the council board to, or the board to accept the improvements into the maintenance system. So, just to make the distinction, you know, um, it, when it comes to accepting the improvements and the, for maintenance, the, the large majority still require some sort of council action, but they did build in something for release of assurances, and I'm sure that just was to provide some flexibility, um, to releasing the cash and, and cash flow for, for developers. Just a quick note, let me pause. Um, I, I mentioned at the beginning, we, we surveyed 11 communities, so some of these aren't adding up to 11. That means that we didn't get a response, um, from one of the communities about a, a, a specific thing. So, um, just wanted to point that out. In terms of warranty period, uh, we found that more or less we're, we're kind of same as everybody. Uh, what we found, the majority were somewhere between one to two years, um, for, for warranty periods. In terms of building permits, um, all communities require that the final plat be approved. I think that's, that's a given. Uh, six of the communities require improvements to be completed and accepted prior to permits being issued. Four allowed, um, and, and, and option for early start after a certain level of improvements were, were installed. Um, in those four years, got to keep in mind that there's some other things in play that, that, that we need to watch for. Um, we're, we're talking about emergency access for vi-, fire vehicles. We're also looking for, um, making sure that combustibles aren't brought in on, onto sites, um, because the water system hasn't been accepted yet, and so it's not active. So, there's, there's a few things there to, to, to keep in mind. And just to, to note real quick, several communities, um, allowed for a, a model complex. Uh, right now, we don't have anything like that. There, we have, there hasn't been a huge demand for it, so, um, it just isn't part of our process, but just wanted to point out that there are some, some provisions in other communities for model homes and, um, some, some criteria that they need to follow, and it's similar to what I was saying before, access, water, and, and whatnot. So, um, at the end here, we, we just have some, um, some conclusions and some options for you to, to, to consider. Just want to emphasize, we're, um, we're seeking feedback. We're not proposing to take anything away from the council. We're just proposing different options for you to, 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 to consider. Um, you know, the city is similar to the majority of the, the, the communities that, that we surveyed. We're not doing anything terribly out of, out of the ordinary. As a matter of fact, the majority are doing it the same way we are. So, in terms of options, um, one option is to just leave it as we have it. Uh, another option is to modify the preliminary plat process to have the Planning and Zoning Commission be the final approval body. Like I mentioned earlier, some, some communities were allowing that. Um, you know, this, this could save some time, about a month or, or so with the, with the developers. Certainly would, would require a change to our code. And, um, just, uh, so that you're aware, if we went this direction, likely requests for exceptions to the rules or for time extensions on preliminary plats would no longer be approved by the city council. That likely would go to just the, the, the planning commission. Um, but we certainly could build in, in, into that process, um, some sort of appeal if they didn't like what the commission was, was, um, saying. Um, so that's one option. Another option is to allow for an administrative process to accept improvements. Um, just note that, um, most of them, uh, I'll have to go, I don't remember. I think it was two that was allowing an administrative process. The, the rest were, um, it was more of a, a, uh, a process by the council or, or the board. But we, we could certainly go that direction. Um, that could save a few weeks, uh, for, for the developers. Also would require a change for the code, and just to point out that, you know, this, the, the administrative part is a, a little less transparent. Um, you know, having a public process keeps everybody accountable. So, just wanted the, to make that note. And then, the, the last option is to allow building permits prior to acceptance of improvements. Um, this could save, uh, a few months for, for the, for the development community. Also would require a change in the code. And if we went this direction, like I said, we would really need to look at, um, limiting combustibles. What, at what point would we allow them to start? Um, some of the challenges, as, as we were thinking this through, could be to, you know, how do we enforce those interim measures, like not bringing cu-, combustibles u- u- unto a site? You know, they're like, oh, we had this load of tresses that came, and sorry, we had to have them delivered. There's no other place to put them. We don't want to get into a scenario where, where we're trying to police that or, or, or being adversarial, or, or, um, we just want to keep it as streamlined as possible. And also, there's, there's times when, you know, there's something wrong with asphalt or the concrete, and if we allow an early start, it just gets a little bit more busy because you have other trades, um, um, on site. So, those are just a few of the, 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 the concerns that, that we had. So, I think with that... Any questions or, or feedback?
Council, any questions?
I, I have a few.
Councilmember Walker.
Or a few statements. I would be okay with before final acceptance of all the approvals, you know, if water was in, if we were able to issue building permits. I think if the water was in, they'd have fire protection. I think that could help some of these developers get these houses built a little bit faster. Um, you know, we do have a housing shortage, apparently. Before the water's in, I understand there's a fire issue of fighting the fire. And I, I, I guess I, I would entertain maybe the developers coming up and giving us some information on that where they're wanting, or are they just wanting, you know, to start concrete and then stop until water's in? Would like to hear from them on that.
Counselor. Not to interrupt, but that's, that's what the request has been, is foundation.
Okay, just foundation.
Yeah.
Okay. I was gonna say, well, once water was in and approved, I think...
Yeah, it's, so it's twofold. It's water and it's getting the heavy fire trucks to that, to that area. So, it becomes a twofold infrastructure issue. It becomes the water to put the fire out, but getting the apparatus to that is based on how far has the road been developed, you know?
And one point I'd like to just make on that is, um, on some of these older subdivisions that were kind of a victim of the, of the recession, they, they kind of stopped. They, they didn't pave, and, uh, we started experiencing in, in a couple different areas, erosion over the top of our water and sewer. So, I think, um, from our perspective, we, we would like to have it paved, um, before, uh, we activate the water and sewer to protect us and, and to protect our facilities.
Okay. And then going back to, uh, acceptance or releasing of assurances, I don't have a problem with staff kind of doing that to save time to get to us. I mean, I'm sure we're going to see a report still saying what was released, because they're the ones coming to us saying X, Y, and Z has happened, so we, we release the funds.
Makes sense.
So, it could save some time and get the assurances back to the developers to use that money on the next development or wherever they're going with it. I would be okay with that if everybody else was.
Well, this, we can't...
No, I know. I, I just, we're just throwing our ideas out.
No, we're looking, we're, we're absolutely looking for this kind of feedback.
Right.
So that it...
There's no action.
So, it guides us in what we would put together and bring back. I will say that the piece that I've seen more often than not, and again, I want to reiterate that this is not a subject that myself or my team have brought up to take away power from the city council. But one of the things that I have seen in my career is that the, at least the preliminary plat process is at the planning commission level and stays at the planning commission level. As Phil's pointed out already, there's a 30-day savings right there in that process. And if, and, and we've, we've had a good, stable planning commission, I would say that that is certainly something that we would recommend to the city council. Now, the, um, the, the problem that we end up in, and Phil had pointed out, is that, um, early starts on the homes with the proper infrastructure is something I, that we can get behind. The problem that we get into, and we don't want to be, we don't want to police construction sites, is a bad player in this, being, doing what Phil described as, well, we just got an early delivery of lumber, and it puts us in a really tough spot of having to try to enforce that, and we don't obviously relish or want to be in that position. Matter of fact, we, we don't want to be in that position at all. We, we support the idea, but we don't, what do you do when someone ignores the rules? Where, where's the teeth and how, how much, how much teeth do you want us to use? So, it's something that, that we've looked at. I think we've talked about it pretty extensively, and we don't have a problem with it. The problem is, if you get a bad player, what do you do with them? You know, what's the penalty? And, um, so, th- there's those pieces, making sure that the infrastructure's in place to have combustibles delivered. Things like that do happen. We still, you know, when you start construction, making sure that we can get ambulances and fire trucks to a work site, whether it's, you know, whether it's commercial or residential, in this case, we're talking residential, of course, we want to be able to help people that are injured, and we want to be able to put out fires. And so, um, we, anything that we can do to avoid putting us in the middle of a, having to enforce is something that we would, we, we, we just don't want to be there. And then, the, the final piece is the, just the final approval process. The, it's been referred to as a political process. Again, one of the reasons why we've, we looked at what we're doing versus what other communities are doing is because we wanted to see, you know, how, how far off are we on that final plat approval? And, um, a- again, the last thing we want to do is usurp or take any authority from the city council, but we wanted to show you what's happening in, uh, other communities. So, um, I think we would be, we would be certainly willing to bring back. It's going to take some work to redefine the rules that we currently have. But would like to know kind of your thoughts on the last piece of those recommendations, which is that final plat approval. And, um, I, well, I guess there's two pieces. The assurance, which I think I've already kind of heard or seen some head nods, uh, with regards to the feeling by the council on that, but it's, if it's different than what I, how I'm reading the room, let me know. But the other one is that final plat approval, and, um, if, if there's a desire to see that process sped up through some kind of administrative authority, or if the council wanted to retain its, uh, authority to, to accept final plat approval.
So, you're, you're talking about the final acceptance of improvements?
Acceptance, yeah, I'm sorry. The final acceptance of the infrastructure. I'm sorry, yes. Counselor Staley.
Okay. Councilwoman Staley.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to weigh in here as the liaison for planning and zoning and, and kind of what I've seen, um, over the years, you know? I think that some of these measures have been put in place, uh, for good reason because we have been burned as a city in the past, and what we experienced in the last, uh, boom were, you know, uh, just a race to build as, as quick as people could build and sell, you know, before the bottom fell out. And, um, I'm a little bit apprehensive about speeding things up too much because I, I believe, you know, these, these measures are in place for a reason. And I personally like the two-step where it goes to P and Z first. They have a discussion. Um, that's kind of the first step where the public is made aware of a new subdivision that's going in. And a lot of times, you see more community members showing up to the next meeting, the council meeting, because they saw the, the video of P and Z or they heard about it from a neighbor, and, and we've seen before where we get large groups at the council meeting to talk about, uh, that subdivision that's going in. And I think that that is really important to give the, the public an opportunity to come in and let us know if, if, if they are okay with what's being proposed. So, I think that's important. You know, i- it's good to be builder-friendly and to get these projects going because we do need housing, but I, I am very cautious about speeding it up to the point where the city ends up getting burned.
Thank you for that comment. Bill, do you have anything to respond to that?
I can see some of the points that, that she's making, um, and that's, um, certainly if, 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 if you guys are desiring more of a public process and, and, and more opportunity for the, the public to be involved, then a two-step process at the preliminary plat stage would be appropriate. You know, the, the, one of the ideas that I presented was, um, you know, it goes to the commission, and if it's a, you know, if there's something that, um, people didn't like, then it, it could go to the council, but I think process-wise, I was just thinking of, um, giving that option to the applicant, not necessarily, um, the public. I'm not sure what that would look like. I think we would, I, I don't know if it would fit, i- if that's the direction we, we wanted to go. We probably just want to leave it the same.
And we, yes, we don't want to slow the process down at all. And we, yes, we don't want to slow the process down at all. I do like in the one comment where you said, you mentioned public transparency. And I think as Councilwoman Staley said, I think that is really utmost important, is transparency. But on the same token, too, we really do need to try to streamline it or where, you know, where there might be hiccups where we can maybe remove some of those obstacles. Any more comments?
I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions, if I may. I like keeping the final approval with city council. I do like that. Can you tell me what the timeline is from the time a developer brings you their project? What's a typical timeline right now? And I ask you that because I know what staffing is like for you. And if we speed up the process, and, I mean, is this gonna benefit your department as well? Is this going to put more burden upon you because more projects are going in, because they're at a faster pace?
Well, with respect to my department, I don't know if the workload would change. I think we'd be looking at the same types of issues and we'd be asking for the same things. The only difference is it might.
I'm thinking of the volume.
Yeah, it may be initially, there would be a huge surge there, for lack of a better term. I don't know, Rich, do you have a timeline? And I'll say, it varies depending on how the comments go and how quickly applicants respond and everything.
Sure, just, I'm just looking for a typical timeline in real time, right now, with the staff that you have. You're, I mean, we're talking about saving time for developers, and I'm just trying to get a perspective on what that timeline looks like.
So when a subdivision comes in, preliminary plat, for example, comes into our office for review, we have a 10-day administrative review process. We usually don't take that much time to review it, just make sure the application is complete. And then after that determination is made, we have 20 working days to send it out to all the departments, including engineering, to get comments. We send it out to other agencies. We then take in those comments, write a report. And then we schedule that, once it's, we have the comments back and we're ready to take it to the planning zoning commission, that then is the next step. So that would still be the new, the steps that would occur under this, under any scenario where we might not have to go to the city council. It would just be the final step after P and Z commission makes this recommendation. It wouldn't go on to the city council. It would be, so as Phil pointed out in the presentation, it would save maybe a month of the process. But everything at the beginning end, the front end probably would take about the same amount of time, I would imagine.
Yeah, and I'll just point out, you know, engineering's usually the holdup on the process right now. We're not hitting that 20-day mark at all, so we're trying our best, but, so.
Okay, what's realistic for you right now?
You know, if things are being addressed, a couple of months.
And sometimes there's more than one review that we, if we know that there's something, you know, that's gonna affect the overall design of the plat, something that's not minor, we will often ask them to prepare and make changes to the preliminary plat before we take it to the planning zoning commission. We usually wait until we're relatively satisfied that they've addressed all the concerns and have met the requirements of the subdivision, or it's before it goes to the commission.
Okay, thank you for that. That gives me a good idea. I am in favor of P and Z, of the commission approving the preliminary plat. I think that definitely is, I mean, I would agree with that. I am in favor of it still coming before council for the final. We know there's gonna be some challenges with packages being delivered. It's just gonna happen. And so my concern is, how do you address that? And so I think that's, that's the big challenge, is how are we going to police that? How, you know, because it's going to happen. I mean, somebody's gonna have an emergency somewhere and they've got to drop that package, and it's just gotta be there, and then all of a sudden, it's there. So that is a big concern of mine. But everything else, I mean, was, is there any pushback ever on the assurance percentage being? I mean, that was just a great, I understand why. I mean, you get burned once, you know, it's, you're a little gun shy. But is there ever any pushback from the builder community about that 130%?
Well, I would say most of the assurances that are happening now, at least on the residential side, don't involve cash or a bond. They're doing it through like a property escrow agreement. So we're not hearing a lot of complaints because they're not needing to do it.
Okay, all right, fair enough. I think that's all the comments I had and things I wanted to get out there. So thanks for the presentation. I appreciate it.
Okay, any other comments? Councilwoman Mello.
Mr. Allred, I had a question. So, Manager Foggan, the city, we don't want to have to police what's going on. But if a builder isn't doing what they're supposed to in these other cities that did allow the staff to sign off on things, was there like a fine to those builders? What were they doing about that?
So I don't think that's something that we asked at the time. This is just kind of something that's evolved, but we could check and see.
Okay.
I got one more.
Yes, Councilman.
Based on what she asked, would maybe just a stop of permits on that subdivision. Just tell them, you get caught loading it up front before you're ready, there's no more permits until the whole improvements have been accepted.
But what if you have multiple builders in? What if you have multiple builders in one subdivision?
Then it's per each developer, each.
Yeah, and then we need to find a way to deal with the hazard that's been brought on site as well. I think that's kind of the, one of the questions that we would need to figure out.
Manager Foggan, did you want to point out something?
It just, just the policing part is definitely workload. We can handle the workload through the development process. It's really how do we take care of that? And Counselor Walker just pointed that out, is it's one of those things where it's gonna be hard to deal with, but there may be some rules that could be put in. But, you know, if that mistake is allowed to happen, then it could become, for that developer or builder, it could be something where you go into the slow process for a certain amount of time or something.
Or a sign that says free firewood. They won't do that again.
Probably not that.
Okay, any other comments from Councilwoman Staley or Mayor? Okay, hearing none.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor?
Said I don't have any comments, but I appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Manager Foggan and Mr. Allred, I do have actually question comments, and it's maybe it might be too broad of a question, and you can help me narrow it down if we need to. We're talking about subdivisions here. As you were calling these other different municipalities, and a number of them are very similar to our municipality, it seems like, in how their process is, did you also ask them how their turnaround process was on just permits in general? Did that ever come up in discussion in their words?
The answer to that is no. We did not ask that question.
Okay.
We know that if not all, most of these communities are facing the same problem. We have had a pretty extensive conversation with Havasu, our neighbor, with regards to empty positions and length of time in this process.
And I think you bring up a good point. I think staffing is really what's hurting a lot of our production on what we can do.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we are curious about that. That was not part of, part and parcel to the numbers we were looking at. We were looking at purely process.
Okay. I was wondering, because I've had another number of developers ask me, you know, well, their common complaint seems to be, how come it takes so long? But, you know, that's a very broad question, because they might have issues in the permits they've turned in. So it all comes, you know, it all.
It's like trying to answer the question, how long does this process take?
Right, exactly.
It's, you know, there's certain days that we're, and goals that we're trying to meet. But it depends on the quality of the plans that have been submitted. It depends on turnaround time on the private sector also. And when you, you know, if you get plans back and red line comments haven't been addressed, and they sit on, in our, one of our departments for three, five days before they're, we look at it, and then it has to be sent back, there's a lot of frustration there, definitely.
There is.
But I'll just point out, each project's different, and they all have different challenges. And so it's just really difficult to project.
And that's why I mentioned it, this is a broad question, so lots of possibilities there. Okay, thank you, Phil and Rich.
And what I'll say, Vice Mayor and Council, is that based on this discussion, which I really appreciate and the feedback, what we will do is digest that, see what we can do to bring back some changes. And the council can certainly kick those around. And we can have another discussion about them and whether councilors like them or don't like them. But I think based on the conversation, I think we're in a position where we could bring something back formally for you to discuss and perhaps vote on.
Okay, thanks again.
Thank you.
Manager Foggan.
Thank you. I'm doing all the talking tonight. I apologize. We do, on a regular basis, we provide different annual reports. And one of the ones that we absolutely love doing for you is our economic development activities. And tonight, we have for you our retail prospectus report. And Gary and Sylvia, this is the world that they live in every single day. And they've been excited to provide this. We've done this. This is an annual report that we've done. And so I'm happy to turn some time over to Ms. Sylvia to walk you through our retail prospectus of this year, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Good evening. This is more so our retail prospectus. And as you know, I'm always working on bringing new retail to Kingman. And so the entire team has worked on this document to put another tool in our toolbox to work on that. Over the past couple of years, we've had some great successes, I would say, even during the time of COVID, bringing new companies such as Cal Ranch and Harbor Freight and some of the light industry companies to the airport. So that's really proud, and we want to keep going that positive direction, especially with the continued growth we're having here. So to show you this, this is our first retail prospectus for the city of Kingman. We have a lot of great information here. And I was just thinking, there was something I was trying to remember, and I think it was that, Mr. Foggan, I am working on your Chick-fil-A still, right? Yeah, so I do have that on the list. I didn't, I didn't want to forget letting you know that. So I do hear what everybody wants and needs, so that's one thing I did want to reiterate, and we will continue to go that direction. But this really came out nice. There's only a couple items that we're touching up before Monday, and it really maps in here. But with this prospectus, we have a lot of great information, like the vicinity of Kingman. Yeah, a little welcome letter. I don't know, can you see this really good? Or do I need to zoom in one more? Or is that a little better? More, okay. There we go. Okay, thank you for that. So we have a nice introduction letter discussing Kingman, some of the backgrounds, what we have, and introducing, you know, whoever I give this document to as the retail specialist. We did include things that we know people want to see right away, right up in the front, like the key demographics of Kingman. And then, of course, we added one of our newest business covers in the background. We do have a retail map and some of the areas that we're lacking, some of the new stores that came. And this just gives them a quick snapshot of what we have here, what we still need, what we still want. And here, we have a little report showing how much potential we have for different types of retail brands, like clothing. Here, we're showing how much actual sales and how much potential will come. So again, it's a snapshot of showing, hey, we need more clothing in Kingman, so come to Kingman, basically, is the summary of that. And again, we do have some great retail here in this location. So up here in this top is showing like Carl's Jr., Cracker Barrel, In-N-Out, McDonald's, Walmart. They're in the top 10% of ranked companies in Arizona. So in other words, we have a lot of traffic hitting these retail locations. So we want more people to see that and more people to come. We also gave a little snapshot of our market access, like ground transportation, rail freight, and air travel. The future interchanges that we have in the works, three of them, yeah, so they're coming along. Along with some of the commercial land opportunities that exist, like Sunbelt, Kingman Crossing, and more, and where to find them on our Choose Kingman website. We do like to show the, we have this great hiking available and all the tourism that we have to offer in Kingman for quality of life. And then we have all our priorities listed. I don't have to go through each one of them, but we have a lot of priorities that, basically, talking about our facade improvement plans for downtown development, how we have installed Route 66 shields, how we continue to work with our retail recruiter to bring in national brands and go to ICSC, which is the retail, hugest convention that we go to in Las Vegas, to network and meet with commercial developers and national retail brands. So we will be using this tool, as I said, to recruit more retail. We do always work on it every day. I would say we are working on some project to one extent or another. We will have this on our Choose Kingman website. We'll be taking this to the ICSC conference and also providing it to our retail recruiter, who will then have it on his website as well, and sharing with it all the brands that he networks with. So this is really a great accomplishment. The entire team worked on this. It did take a little time because it's our first one. But then, you know, from there, we can update as needed on an annual basis. So it's a pleasure to present this document to you, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Yes, Manager Foggan.
So I just want to also talk about, as far as the prospectus goes, one of the main activities that we're doing regularly, if not daily, weekly, and that is trying to fill existing spaces. This isn't just an effort to find new ground for people to land on or businesses to land on. Sylvia and Gary and our ED team are constantly trying to fill spaces. And over the last year and a half, we've filled some space that had been sitting vacant for a long time. And that's credit to Sylvia's efforts, really, in holding a lot of hands, Gary doing the same thing. And I just wanted to point out that as we move forward, those spaces that are available continue to be in our scope, in, I guess, in our prospectus of where we're looking to land, folks. So it's not a matter of how do we ignore or are we ignoring existing commercial space. We are actively meeting with people that are experts in both local and regional, statewide, with regards to how do you, how do you take those spots on. This document is a tool that we will use for that as well. And so I know Sylvia has put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into filling our vacant building, commercial spaces. And I just wanted to make sure that the council had seen and recognized the effort that she has made and that Gary's making to try to get people into those spaces because that has seemed to be worse than pulling teeth for some reason, so.
Time is correct, yes.
Questions and comments from council?
I do have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. I'm seeing this just for the first time, so forgive me. Something that jumps out at me, and it always will jump out at me, and I will always question it, is, I mean, I understand that when you're talking to retail outfits that are looking to come in, we have to go off of our population as it is within the city limits. But I really, I'm sure it happens in discussion, and I do see in your letter, making the case for Kingman, that we have access to a population of nearly 200,000. I really would like to see. 200,000. I really would like to see something in there with the population of our unincorporated area. And I say this because there is so much construction that is going on in our unincorporated area and such a population just out over the hill in Golden Valley. I mean, I don't know what the population is out there, but I think that if you included that, that would, you know, I think spark a little bit more interest that these people only need to drive 20 minutes into town to hit a retail location or go to dinner or, and we definitely wanted them coming this side of the hill rather than the other side of the hill, right? So I, I will always talk about this. I, I realize you have to work off of city population, but I really think that unincorporated area is extremely important when you're, when you're talking to these people about proximity and population.
I ab, I absolutely appreciate that comment. And one thing I'd like to explain just a little further is that the, you know, the population within city limits is about a little over 30,000 or so. And so we did actually incorporate, when, when we're talking about 200,000, that is going beyond our city limits and expanding into the county area like you're, you're suggesting. And I believe we went with the 20-mile radius population to use that number. And so it would include like Golden Valley and what else is within 20 minutes. But, so that's how we did get the 200,000.
And I appreciate that. But if it were on that page as an unincorporated area for someone such as myself, where I'd rather look, look at the pretty graphics, you know, if, if it could go in there as an unincorporated area, so I didn't have to read six paragraphs down to see what our population is in the city, it's just a suggestion. I just, I want that to stand out, that we could potentially have a population of close to 50,000. That means a lot more to these restaurateurs and retail outlets that are coming in versus just the 31,000. So just some considerations, some feedback. But I also wanted to make a comment. I highly respect the ED team. I think that you guys are doing a fabulous job. I think that what you're bringing in is a good mix. I, I feel like the context and the things that I hear about how active your department is in, in fighting for Kingman to, for, for industry to come here and for retail to come here, I really, really appreciate you and, and what the ED team does. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Mello.
Sylvia, I just think the world of you. We're so lucky to have you. And Bennett and Gary, you guys are just a great team and we're so lucky to have you. I thank you. This is awesome.
Thank you. Definitely a good team, that's for sure.
I would like to echo.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Hi. I echo all the praise for the team. I, I am so thankful because it's been built over time and, and, and it's been so productive. But I also want to reinforce the comments made by Councilwoman Stanley. I had the same reaction exactly. When I look at that list, that's what I look at quickly. And I was thinking about however it's framed, it seems like the Arizona Office of, the, what is it, the OEO or whatever it's called now, the Arizona Economic Development Group, at one time tried to give us a greater region market number. And I think it was very close to what you're using here. But if it were called something like the Greater Kingman Region even, on that same list, so that you see the Kingman population and then, but the service population, and, and then if there's any way to emphasize the pass-through traffic impact, because that also has a huge impact on, on these markets. And so we have the, the greater contiguous areas. You know, when people talk about Phoenix, they probably give a number, but they don't think, well, that's really Peoria and Scottsdale and Tempe, all these contiguous areas, but they think of it as a block. And if there was some way to, to do that, I totally agree with Councilwoman Stanley, it would, it would be more impactful if it were like in that list of data. And then also the pass-through traffic. I noted that you said you're feeding information into a study, but I think that's quite sizable with our interchanges coming in. That's about all I can talk right now, but thank you guys. I, I'm just so proud of our ED team. So thank you so much for what you did there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walker.
Yeah, I just echo what everyone said. I think we have a great economic team. I would like to see the I-40 count, traffic count. I don't know if we can incorporate that on there. And then like Councilmember Stanley was saying, where it says our pop, current population may be right underneath there, have an asterisk and put our, I don't know if we want to call it our service, or, you know, what, what would, the exact wording for it would be. But I mean, we have people that just live right outside the city limits and if you talk to them, they, you know, they claim Kingman is their, their city. They, they live in Kingman, they shop in Kingman. So I think we really need to show that number. I agree with everybody.
It, it took me a minute to understand what you were saying. So now I've caught up and I, I see. So yes, I would like to add that there as well.
Well, yeah, with all the development that's going out, North Stockton Hill Road, I mean, we, we need to include those people.
So I had it in the letter, but not in the, the demographic. Right, okay, got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Valley Vista is not in the numbers that we're using, other than the regional influence, which is to, the regional influence is the 200,000. The, the asterisk part is the service, the service area of Kingman and that's another 22,000 people. Okay, so the question about Golden Valley is just under 9,000 according to the 2020 census and then just under 13,000 for Kingman New Butler or Butler New King, I can't, whichever direction that goes. But, but that, that population, which is our, you know, I guess we would consider to be at least a big portion of that to be our service area, is another 22,000 people. So if you take the 33,000 and add to that, you're talking about roof count of 55,000 within our, what we'll call our service area.
And Ron, do you have a count for Valley Vista? Because let's face it, retail wise, they're, they're all coming into Kingman for doing their shopping.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know past those areas that I just quoted.
Okay. Because I think we should lump them in with that number too, at least a little bit going, reaching out to the east. I always tell people when they come to Kingman, if they blink while they're, they're, they're driving up Stockton Hill Road and don't see the city limit sign, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna, they're just gonna think it's all Kingman. And I think as, has been mentioned, everybody just once they say, they, they say they're from Kingman, they don't differentiate it from New Butler, they just say Greater Kingman area. And I like the, the suggestions that have been made here. And once again, I echo what everybody else has said. We appreciate all that has been done to the team, for the team on this. So, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you Sylvia.
You're welcome. I, I have some next questions.
Manager Foggan?
She's almost done.
Yeah.
So just as a preview to, to this, a couple of years ago, we started what we consider to be a successful facade and sign program. And when we were discussing these programs, we had also mentioned at the end of, I want to say them being passed, that one of the things that we would bring for you in a future year is a mural program. And the time seems right to bring that forward. And so Sylvia's been asked to look at mural programs, tried to sit down as a team and talk about what we've seen that works, what isn't working. And I think we've developed a mural program that, that we're, we're excited about and I think that the council can be excited about and frankly, the community can be excited about. I, I cannot tell you how much we've appreciated being able to do the facade program and the interest that that continues to generate with our commercial businesses. And so with that, Ms. Sylvia, you want to walk the council through what we've come up with?
Absolutely. Thank you again. So yeah, we've had quite a bit of success with the facade improvement program. I'd like to reiterate that. And the latest success story was Garibaldi's Neon Sign. If anybody has seen that, it really came out nice. So it is definitely gaining momentum with a lot of business owners and we're seeing more and more still come to the table wanting to participate. So that's good news. And now here's an additional incentive program that's really great, the murals incentive program. And this is actually just, it's fun. It's also fun. So over the past few years, we have seen more and more murals being painted on many of the downtown businesses. And a lot of it has been done by the business owners on their own, wanting to just dress up their buildings and taking measures to revitalize downtown. We've seen a lot of tourists that stop by and stop at these murals and take pictures with them. And, you know, basically that's making a, a destination point when that happens and they're Instagramming them and putting little logos like we're in Kingman or, or whichever, which is all great, you know, for Kingman's economy and bringing tourists to town. And it, and it's fun too, also. So this is the program that we have put together. I plan to have it on the website by next Monday as well for people to start applying. The whole team again worked on this project, so it's definitely a team effort here, but I will be overseeing it. I kind of went over some of the benefits of murals already. Increases overall attraction of the space, builds community, engages residents, encourages a public-private partnership, which we were doing, discourages graffiti and vandalism. And some of this was taken just nationwide, nationwide. These are nationwide benefits of murals. Attracts foot traffic and tourism to downtown, which means increased spending in downtown businesses, opportunity to tell a community story and increases appreciation for the arts, artists. And here's one of the popular murals that we see here and there, the Angel Wings. The location of the mural program will start in downtown. Basically first through Sixth Street, Beale Street, Andy Devine, Oak, and why am I blank all of a sudden right here? What street that is? That's funny. But basically it's the downtown area. We're going to start there. Property owners and tenants of commercially zoned buildings, including nonprofit, can apply. Third-party organizations may apply with consent of property owners. We've already had some interest with, with groups that would want to do that. The grant amount, it would be maximum reimbursement of 5,000. So it is a 90% match. The minimum cost of the project would be 1,000. So for a $5,000 mural project, the applicant can be reimbursed 4,500 and the total cost of the applicant is 500. We have set aside 20,000 for this program and it is first come, first served until all funds are expended. Now, the proposed murals that we're looking for should encourage and attract interactivity, contribute to the visual enhancement of the property, should complement the business and the downtown character, should not state the business name because then it becomes a sign actually, should incorporate elements that are harmonious with downtown Kingman. That, that reminds me of how I used to talk in planning terms, right Rich? Harmonious, so. Here are some examples of interactive murals. These don't have to be the murals that come in, but this is what we're looking for. Murals where people can kind of participate in the image or they can be regular murals too. But these are always just fun and bring more traction for people wanting to take pictures with them and, and adds to the downtown characteristics. Oops, I went fast there. The application process is fairly, fairly simple. I have a very detailed length of all the guidelines for applicants to follow in every document that's needed for the checklist. But really, it starts with a pre-application meeting with me and I would schedule it just to go over the basis, basics of the program. Applicant completes the application project, then it's reviewed by a committee of six within the city and we're going to work on the chamber as an external reviewer for this program. If everything meets the guidelines, we give them a notice to proceed. The applicant has three months to complete the project and then they would submit for reimbursement. And really that's, if you have any questions about that, please give them to me and I can explain further any part of the program that I might not have covered.
Sylvia, so, you know, I'm just concerned of really colorful or murals, not color, but you know, colorful material. Are you understanding what I'm saying? How do I explain this?
Everybody.
We, we understand what you just said.
So who is deciding that? What, what is a go and what is?
That, that's always an interesting question, isn't it? Because the art is to the beholder, right? But we have a good, you know, what we're trying to do is have a good team put together so that we can at least see if it is fitting with the downtown or whatever the business is and not off, I guess, totally off. And I, I don't really have a better way to describe it, do you?
Yeah, well, it's, the only thing that I would say is that we have a review committee that will, will look at the applications. And remember, this has to have city funding behind it. And if it's, if it's not socially acceptable or that it's, interpretation of it is some kind of, you know, going to be a problem for the community, the review committee will absolutely catch that. And, you know, we, we, what we're looking for is what we're seeing across the country, the interactive murals, the things that go with our theme and our effort to, to, you know, to draw tourists of all sorts, right? Where our tourists come from hundreds of different places in the world and across this country. And, and it's gotta, you know, it's gotta work with our downtown. And if it doesn't work, then it, it's not going to get city funding. I mean, we don't want to fight with anybody over art. That's the last thing you want to do. You're welcome.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question as to the afterlife of these murals. So they get put in our community. What, what happens? Is, is there something in the plans for upkeep? Who's responsible to keep them looking as they are when they are presented to the community? Yeah, I'm so, so I'm concerned about that when it's all done. Who's responsible? What kind of standards are we going to hold them to?
Thank you for that question. I did put in the application itself, a couple of things. When they, when the paint is put on there, they still have to put a protectant coat, number one, and paint sealer. And some of this stuff has to be showed when they turn in the application of what they will be using to put that initial protectant on. I'm trying to remember if I put five years in here for.
My apologies. Again, I, I just got this today. So I am seeing at the applicant, the mural must remain on the building for a minimum of five years. So my apologies.
No, that's no problem. I don't mind answering at all.
Thank you for that.
It's actually an excellent question, something that we, that we actually batted around quite a bit. You know, people have great ideas to put murals on buildings, but then don't add in the cost to put the protectant over the top of it, which is generally really pricey, like more than a thousand dollars on the, on the mural that's on the front of that handout. And so it's something that we expect in the review process to be talking to building owners about. But yeah, it, it was determined that five years was the proper investment time.
Any other questions or comments? I know I was looking at your application and just, you know, what you asked Councilwoman Stanley is. And on the back, on that next to last page, on the back of it, it says identify protectant coat or paint sealer. So I'm glad this is a great discussion about that because I've always wondered that too, you know? Even after five years, what happens? Do we, I know, you want just five years, I know.
Yeah, we, we, we hope that they, that the program's still in place and we hope that they apply to renew it.
To refresh it or do something. Thank you. Gary?
Just a little bit of help here. When we really got, working with, especially with those murals that Scott Dutton did on the tanks, we found at that particular point a, a stuff called Frog Juice, crazy name, but it, it actually protects those murals for up to 25 years. And that Frog Juice was also applied to the large mural behind the, the theater. And so Manager Foggan's right, this stuff is not free, but it, it has an unbelievable life expectancy. So, so yeah, that's one thing that we made sure was part of the program. And one other thing that Sylvia and I, I had discussed with her, down in Lake Havasu, they had done one of these interactive murals on the side of the building and it was where the old Scholoz. the old Shalowskis was, very colorful, really very pretty. And I always wondered, too, then one day I happened to be downtown, and here are all these kids lined up with their senior gowns and stuff on, with each one of them having their own photographer. And it was because that was the most colorful sight in town, was that wall with the flowers and everything. And what was amazing, there were about 10 of them, all their families and everybody else. So those interactive murals are really good. And I know at one time Mayor Miles had talked about, you know, the interactive murals where you actually become part of the picture or whatever. So that was really the impetus behind what Sylvia was researching and stuff. And so I, too, want to thank her, because this young lady knows how to dig into things. And so when you say research, Sylvia leaves no stone unturned. So thank you, Sylvia.
It's the planner in me, still.
It's the planner, yeah, that's why we stole her.
Yeah. Thank you, yep.
Okay, Sylvia, Gary, and team, we appreciate the update on that, too.
You're welcome.
Okay. Manager Foggan?
All right. The last item that we have for you is the East Bench Regional Trail. We've talked about this in the past a couple of times. Mike and I got to talking about it, and just wanted to make you aware that we, this is still an ongoing project, and I'll let Mike kind of tell you where, really what's happening with it and where it's going.
Okay, I think I'm, there we go, whoops. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilors, thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. The Kingman Crossing Regional Trail, I've been working with Travon Pennington on some of this, and I'm pretty excited about it, I think it's a really cool project. So, and it leads to a bigger project, we've talked about utility easement trails, which can link all areas of our city together, which is kind of exciting, and like the city of Scottsdale does that, has done a great job of that, and there's a lot of other cities in our state that have done that. But at the November meeting of the Park Commission, they voted unanimously to approach council with a resolution of support for this project to move it forward. And so that's what I'm here for today, to talk to you about that. This trail in particular will link Sunbelt Park to the east branch, to the Walupi foothills, and all the way over to Walupi Mountain Road, which will tie in a lot of subdivisions there and give people in those areas a great opportunity to hike, bike, walk their dog, horseback riding. It's gonna be a multi-use trail that'll be really good for a lot of things. And a lot of these trails are out there. If you've been out on a quad or ATV, you've seen a lot of these trails that follow utility lines. And the city manager and I took a ride on it and checked it out, too, so it's really kind of exciting, though. Road crossings should be avoided as much as possible, but they are necessary, and obviously safety is the most important thing about any of the road crossings, and the right-of-way should go to the road traffic. And barriers and gates will be needed in some areas. The Kingman Crossing Regional Trail has a proposed Mojave County Park that is, will have campsites at it, and that, the other thing about this, and that would be on BLM land, so there's a, this project crosses a lot of different properties, federal lands, which is managed by BLM, city of Kingman land, state-owned land, Mojave County land, and several private owners. And to assure public safety, Travon's recommended that he's gonna try to get some of the funds that are generated from the county park to go toward the maintenance of the entire trail. Whether that can happen, I don't know, but it's nice that they're talking about that. I think it's important. And the Mojave County residents are all gonna benefit from this, because people are gonna really utilize this a lot and come from all over to utilize these trails in the future. There's no question about it. This will give you 12 more miles of hiking trails, biking trails, dog walking, and, I don't know why that's not going down for me. I guess I'm done. Here we go, I guess I can do it this way. Anyway, like I said, this ties into the utility easement trails that I've talked about. This would be a really cool first start on that, to be honest with you. And utility easement trails could eventually link Walupi Mountain Park to downtown Kingman, downtown Kingman to the north side of Kingman, to the Surbat Mountains, can really link a lot of areas, and I mentioned this just today, they're working on, if you notice, a bunch of earth-moving equipment over on the other side of the railroad tracks today, I saw that up there, and I found out that's Unisource working on it. So they're already starting on my trail to get us up to the top of the mountain, so that was pretty exciting to see that, too. So, anyway, also, obviously, signs are gonna be very important for that, and we will obviously see to it that that's a very big part of it. Here's barriers and gates might be needed at some areas, there's some areas we're grazing, and those issues can be out here, so you have to have some of the barriers similar to that. Trailhead standards are gonna be important, obviously, to have a size of the trailheads for the carrying capacity of that trail and plus the potential growth. Parking lot needs to have size to have horses unloaded, other trailers, shade barriers, shade structures, drinking fountains, restrooms in some places. Kiosk information boards are very important, obviously, and just to have it a nice trailhead is important. Obviously, we've done some really cool work in some of our areas right now, and we'd like to see that get even better, so. Like I mentioned, the roads, roads and gates are gonna be important. Obviously, safety is the most important, the most important aspect when you're doing this construction. This, you can't really, you can see it pretty good, I guess, up there. All the blue areas are other utility easements that are in Kingman, so it just shows you that there's a lot of potential for even above and beyond this one I'm talking about today. But this is really an exciting first start on the project, basically. It's, these are very involved, though, there's a lot of legal departments that are gonna have to agree on things, and agreements written, trail design, construction, and the added cost of maintenance in the future, so. But as I said, the, after, at the Park Commission meeting, after a lot of good conversation, they voted unanimously that I bring this to council, so that's what I'm here for. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, Mike, thank you for that update. Questions or comments from council?
I do. I would just like to thank you and your hard work, I know your team works hard at everything you guys do, and I think this is a great plan. We ride the trails down in the Chandler area, and it's on drainage canals, power easements, and it seems like they connect to a lot of parks. So it's a great, great plan, and I'm excited to see this moving forward.
Appreciate that very much.
I also had a comment, Vice Mayor. Thank you. I am very in favor of this, and I will look for an invitation to hike with you when it's all done.
All right, thank you.
Great.
I also had a comment.
Yes.
It's no surprise that I'm in full support of this trail. I would just want to thank you and your staff and the Parks Commission and Travon Pennington for bringing this forward. I think it's fantastic, and I'd love to see that blue line, all of it, be implemented soon, because I have noticed a steady increase of cars in the parking lots at our trails. It's catching on, people are using them, they're getting, our trails are getting better and better all the time, and it's such, it's such a wonderful amenity for our community that doesn't cost, you know, a ton of money like, like some of the other amenities do. So thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing this come to fruition.
Thank you. Mike, once again, thanks to you and your team, and in fact, as part of this, you know, I know you've mentioned to me in the past about this plan and the blue lines and the utility easements trail. And, you know, just like on the back of your retail prospectus, explore Kingman, this trail, that's what that's, this is all about, is making Kingman more livable and more enjoyable to visit, so we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. I think that's it. Manager Foggan, do we, we don't have anything else on the list? Six announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager, and we'll start off with Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The only announcement that I have is Saturday, January 22nd, there is a ribbon cutting for the Tesla supercharging stations at the powerhouse. That event will take place from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM. If you're able to make it, that would be awesome.
Thank you. I would invite all council members to go to that if they're, if it's possible, that would be great. Councilmember Watkins, I mean Walker.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilwoman Samley?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman, no.
Nothing.
Councilwoman Staley?
I don't have anything else to add tonight, thank you.
You're welcome. Mayor Miles?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just mentioned that Tri-City Council is tomorrow, it's in Lake Havasu City, but it is also on Zoom, and I think it's at 12:30, is that right, Manager Foggan?
That is correct.
Okay, so all, everyone is invited, of course, to attend that or to stream it. And one other, one other thing, there is a Veterans Resource Fair on January 28th at the fairgrounds from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, so there are going to be a lot of organizations there with resources to support our veterans, and so I just wanted to make sure that we know about that and that our veterans are informed about that opportunity on the 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have anything. I would mention, just, and encourage people to stay healthy, there's a lot of sickness going on, and the numbers are increasing, and so please strive to do what you need to do to keep yourself healthy, and plus enjoy this amazing city that we live in, that's part of being, doing that. Council requests for future reports and updates, number seven. Do I hear anything from anybody?
From me?
I do have, I have a request, Manager Foggan. I noticed that we had three reports, and they, we didn't have any backup information, I mean, they weren't in our backup for our agenda, so I'd like to make sure that we get our reports. So we have time to review the information, I wouldn't have asked the question I did of Sylvia had I had a chance to look, and that's important to me, I want to make sure and do my due diligence, so could we have those?
Yes, we, we make every effort, just oftentimes, we're, on the department reports, we're scrambling to get information put together, so we will provide them as soon as they're available, as early as we can.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay. Councilwoman Staley, do you have anything as far as requests?
No, thank you.
And Mayor Miles?
Thank you.
Okay, I have nothing. Hearing no one else from council has any requests from that, I would propose that we, well, I would, I would consider a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We're all adjourned, thank you.